The Utilities Commission meeting to order here this evening. It's 7:30 PM. Our first order of business, sorry Marty, is to approve the minutes of the Utilities Commission meeting of December 21st, 2015.
I move they approve the minutes as submitted.
Is there a second? All those in favor? Any opposed?
Unless you have any questions.
All right. Let the record show that we unanimously passed the minutes. Our next order of business is operating funds on hand for the Utilities Commission. Our total cash on hand is $637,178.19. In the capital funds for water and sewer hookup, we have $495,400 for a total of The next order of business is the payment of the bills.
I move the bills be paid as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? All right. Any opposed? Let the record show we unanimously agreed to pay the bills, which leads us to the one and only Bob Sykes. Take it away, Mr. Sykes.
Evening, Mayor and Council. We've been working on the line that goes from Queen Street to Water Street down adjacent to the Warner Park. We tried two times to run the sewer line ourselves, and each time we did it, even though we used the transit, we wound up coming off great somewhere. So I talked to a contractor, Billy Joyner. He came in and he finished the line for us. One of the reasons we were having such a hard time is there's only five inches of fall from one manhole to the other, and something like that requires a laser level that we don't have. He has it. They came in and together we ran the line successfully. So there will be a bill coming in for that. We had three leaks since the weather got cold, Cannon Street, one on Kent and one on I. Usually we don't see that kind of impact, but I think because this was so fast and furious, it is having an impact. We did not fill the position that we advertised for the utilities, and I haven't given up hope yet, but I don't want to rush into anything and get somebody that's not going to work out. I had two final candidates selected, and a background check on both of them failed. One was due to, one didn't have a driver's license, and the other one was being sentenced in court. So both of those fell through.
How long has the position been posted?
It was posted for three weeks on Craig's List and where Kim usually posts the jobs. And we also got a number of applicants that had applied for roads positions or town positions or general positions with the town. But I haven't given up hope yet. I still want to get some more people in and we'll probably re-advertise the position. And if anyone knows anyone that may want that position, since hopefully we'll have a wide audience out there, anyone interested in the position should come into Town Hall and fill out an employment application, and know that we are an equal opportunity employer to get in an application. If you want to work, we want you. That brings me to the hospital. I'll give you the update at every meeting. I do not see in the report where they actually injected well number 20, monitoring well 20, but it was approved for it to be used as an injection extraction well. Maybe it's just not on their schedule yet. But a couple of things do catch my attention. Equipment failures. They pumped the chemical, they did the injection into monitoring well number 41. The extraction pump froze. The solution wasn't to get another extraction pump, it was to not do an extraction at all. So they notified MDE of that, and apparently MDE did not have a problem with that. I don't understand that. And here's some numbers for you. They told us they would be extracting two to three times the amount that they injected. They injected in that period, this is injection number 35, and the numbers can be borne out in the email, they injected 4,860 gallons. They extracted 2,813, about half of what they injected. That's not what they told us they were going to do.
And that's the Ivysol that they're injecting?
Yes.
So if they're not extracting as much as they're putting in, where is it going?
Hopefully not in our water system, that's the problem.
That is the $50,000 question. And why isn't anybody concerned about where it's going? MDE and the hospital, when they come to give the presentations, oh, don't worry, we're going to put it into the ground, but we're taking it right back out. We're going to make sure that we get all of it out, and we'll be testing to make sure we get all of it out. They're not getting all of it out. There's not even a good effort attempt to get all of it out. When you're putting in 5,000 and pulling out 3,000, you know that the numbers don't add up. And we're talking about people with PhDs.
So how much oil are they extracting then?
No measurable oil at all.
But that's the whole point of putting the Ivysol into the ground, right?
They told us that the point of putting the Ivysol into the ground was to increase the oil recovery. They have not removed one measurable gallon of oil during this whole process. They have removed oil detections at 2 milligrams per liter, 4 milligrams per liter, that if you add that up, you can come up with pounds or gallons of oil that were removed, but there's no mass recovery. That entire my select system that they have running that removes the oil, that they're pumping all this through, has not removed a gallon of oil. Each and every report says that they have not even seen a sheen of oil in that system. And that begs the question, what's the point of this?
Why do they keep doing it, right?
The point of this, as I think I've said a dozen times before, this isn't an effort to clean the site. This is an effort to clean the soils around the monitoring wells. And if you look at the numbers that we're getting back, that's all they're getting. The hospital told me at a meeting that there were, Bill was there, the hospital's attorneys were there, I'm not sure if the mayor was there. But I said, if there's another method for calculating how much oil is in the ground other than the EPA paper, the behavior of hydrocarbons in the subsurface, if there's another method for doing it, I want to know what it is. And they said, we'll get it to you. I've gotten nothing.
So what's to stop us from, say, getting approval from MDE to dig our own monitoring wells? Why can't we do that?
We have to have the property to drill them on. We have to have the budget for permission.
Okay. I think the town's concern is that this process is going to result in MDE being convinced that there's really no oil left in the ground to recover. And I think my concern is they prematurely closed this thing out, and there's a lot of oil still in the ground that they haven't recovered, and I think that'll lead us to our next item on the agenda. But, you know, if in fact there's no oil there, then we need assurances that we're going to be covered in a worst-case scenario if this is allowed to be closed out, because I feel like that's kind of where this is heading unfortunately.
I think that's been the direction from the get-go. Now, the EPA paper that I keep referencing is available online. It is called "The Behavior of Hydrocarbons in the Subsurface." In that paper, it states that in a pump-and-treat system like this, if you remove 50% of the oil that's in the ground, you have done an outstanding job. If that's true, there's still 87,000 gallons of oil in the ground. It may be absorbed on the soils, it could be in pockets, we don't know. But if there's another method for calculating how much oil is left in the ground, I can't find it. That is the paper for the EPA. It has their guidelines and their SOPs in it for determining these things. And as much as people say, well, that's not accurate, at MDE, the director said, my guys are experts. You have to trust the experts. I said, EPA's experts too. Why don't we trust them? But that went nowhere. So my concern is, if this is settled, if there's science behind their belief that there's no oil left in the ground, sure. Because all the science I'm able to find says there's still 87,000 gallons of oil in the ground. And that the efforts that they've taken in remediating this oil, they had no mass recovery at all. They cannot say that they had one gallon of oil to take to the recycling center that they got out of the ground.
So is this Ivysol, they said it was biodegradable. Is that true?
They told us that it was 90% biodegradable in 30 days.
Okay.
But when they put the Ivysol into the ground, they test for it. It came back at about 250 parts per million. When they tested for it a month later, they still got 100 parts per million.
Right.
That's not 98% biodegradable. Three months later, they were still detecting Ivysol. When they stopped detecting it, now, I don't know if that's because it did actually biodegrade or it traveled away from the wells. So that's the update on the hospital. The big concern for me is the limited extraction compared to the injections. What they told us was two to three times the amount that's injected would be removed, and what we're getting is about 60% instead of 200 to 300%. So they know that they're not removing everything that they put in.
So can you go to MDE and tell them? I mean, can we go to MDE and say, this isn't what we were promised? What's Plan B?
We can write a letter, but the way that it's been working throughout these updates is the hospital says we want to do this, MDE says go ahead and do this. They have not been refused anything. There has been the equipment breakdowns that they've been having at the hospital, MDE hasn't shut them down. MDE hasn't said, hey, let's put this on a hiatus till you get some operational equipment in here. Well 41, they couldn't extract the Ivysol, instead of MDE saying, let's pause this until we get that stuff out of the ground. Nothing. None of that is happening. The oversight is there in theory, but there's nothing in practice that says that they're actually exercising any operational control over what's happening at the site. They're leaving it to Dane Bauer, a former director at MDE, who's now working for the hospital to make all the decisions. And all they're doing is nodding and saying, okay. So we can write a letter to MDE stating objections to what's been going on up there, and outlining the differences between what the proposed action plan was and the actual plan that they're putting in use.
Well, I think maybe we should do that simply because it probably won't get any more action because they're pretty anti-active anyway, but what it does is put one more thing on record.
Yeah, I agree.
In case something happens, then we have a paper record that we can come back and say, look, in January of 16, we let you know that you were failing pumps.
Who would draft that letter?
I would.
Okay. So do we want to give Bob the go-ahead to draft that letter?
Please.
And I'll copy Bill on it, and he'll review it before it gets signed.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Right. And I wouldn't, as I said, I wouldn't hold out a lot of hope that they'll do something, but at least we'll have something to go back.
I've been having...
And that's the danger for me. It gets frustrating when you keep saying the same thing over and over and over and over, and it seems like nobody is listening.
Right.
Well, I would put that in my letter, that this is, you know, I've notified you a number of times, and this is, we're not getting anything.
The thing that's tricky for us is, this isn't our show. You know, it's generally when this happens, it's between MDE and the polluter. And the problem for us is that we're the ones with the most to lose, but we have no control at the end of the day over the process. So all we can do, I agree with you, Marty, we need to keep a paper trail going. I've had Jen, I've explicitly been working with Jen to have every single piece of correspondence we've ever said about this in a file that's this thick now, so that if something were ever to happen to our water supply, we can say, here's the record.
If you look across the state, where you have situations like this, where people feel like an oil cleanup is not being overseen with enough prudence, it always ends up being a state agency. MDE does not come down on state agencies. You know, if there's an oil leak somewhere, they will make everybody else in that area make sure that they don't have a leak before they ask that state agency to even check.
All right.
And if you look for newspaper reports, things like that, it'll bear that out. When it's a private individual, MDE is all over, and they spare no expense to make sure that everything is remediated, that the health of the public is not put at risk. But when the polluter is another state agency, that oversight doesn't seem to be there. That's all I have.
All right. Well, that kind of bleeds into our next item, and, you know, obviously, we're not super excited about the whole Ivysol procedure, how it's being implemented, and I think it's fair to say that we're not super trustful that this is going to remediate the spill. And to that end, on November 2nd, me and Bill Ingersoll and Bob went to Secretary Grumble's office in Baltimore. I took a day off work. We met with him and his staff, and basically really pushed for a consent agreement between the town, the hospital, and MDE, where we would be basically financially covered in the event of a worst-case scenario. And we basically haven't heard back since that meeting, which was on November 2nd of 2015. And kind of because of that, we also haven't heard anything from the hospital about a possible consent agreement. So in the lack of, in the absence of action on their behalf, we feel compelled to pursue other avenues, basically to cover our tails and protect our citizens from potential contaminants from this site. So along those lines, about a month ago, we approached our state delegation about introducing a local courtesy bill in Annapolis that would basically, on a legal front, on a legislative front, provide financial assurances for the town in the case of a worst-case scenario. So tonight, we've drafted a letter that we plan to put in the mail tomorrow to our delegation, and I'm going to read it right now for the record, for the public. So this letter will go to all of our state representatives, basically asking for a local courtesy bill. So this one is addressed to Senator Hershey. Dear Senator Hershey, in follow-up to Chestertown's prior correspondence of December 1st, 2015, and request for the introduction of a local courtesy bill during the 2016 General Assembly session for purposes of protecting the town of Chestertown from damages resulting from the oil spill in the mid-1980s and the remediation action/inaction by the University of Maryland Shore Medical Center at Chestertown, UMMS, this narrative is proposed for bill drafting purposes. The title is "Oil Discharge-Groundwater Contamination Impacting the Public Water Supply and Waterworks of the Town of Chestertown." And here's the text. The bill would require the State of Maryland, upon a finding that specified contaminants have migrated further into any monitoring well, Sentinel well, or any production well, jeopardizing the town's water supply sources, to hold the town of Chestertown harmless from all costs or cleanup, corrective action, and treatment in order to provide safe and affordable drinking water to town residents and businesses without disruption of this essential public service. The scope of protection for the town includes the state's responsibility for establishing an alternative public water supply source, i.e. a new well field, treatment, and distribution facilities. The expectation of contamination of the town's public water supply will be exacerbated by the suspension of a pump-and-treat remediation operation that has successfully held in place the fuel oil spill at the University of Maryland Shore Medical Center at Chestertown. In addition, a revised treatment technology involving an innovative surfactant known as Ivysol imperils the town's water supply if not properly removed. The immediate availability of funding to the town from a specified state funding source would be triggered upon the detection of specified contaminants, including total petroleum hydrocarbons, or TPH, diesel-ranged organics, DROs, and volatile organic compounds, VOCs, Ivysol surfactant, and constituents associated with a fuel oil spill in any monitoring well, Sentinel well, or any town production well. The contaminant levels specified in the bill are the same as those currently defined as levels of concern in current MDE regulations. Under current regulations, if the concentration of fuel oil constituents in site groundwater sampling and testing is equal to or greater than the levels of concern, the concentration amounts must be reported to MDE within 24 hours, and a corrective action plan is required. The person responsible for the release of fuel oil is liable to any other person for any damage to real or personal property directly caused by the release, including contamination of the town's water supply. From the responsible party, the state can seek reimbursement for any funding that may be provided to the town pursuant to this bill. We thank you for your cooperation in this matter. Sincerely, Chris Serino, Mayor. So the bottom line is, you know, we feel compelled to take this action because of inaction on the behalf of both UMMS, Shore Regional Health, and also MDE per our request that goes back not only to November 2nd, but we've been asking for something along these lines for months. And when we don't hear anything, we just need to move. That was in our state of the town report, that we're going to protect our water supply at any and all costs, and this is one of the tools that we are going to continue to pursue until or unless one of these parties steps up to the plate and gives us the assurances that we're looking for. So that's that. That's going in the mail tomorrow. Nice relaxing mayoral stuff. Any questions or comments? Yes?
I just want to have Bob clarify something. A lot of people keep asking, you know, about the Ivysol itself, but your concern is what it becomes after it mixes with the oil. So I hear people talking about the Ivysol well's not harmless, but you've always pretended that, what's going to happen to it once it mixes with the oil? Could you explain that again?
I have an overall concern for the quality of the water that people are going to be drinking in the town of Chestertown. What we don't know, just like 50 years ago, they didn't know about hexavalent chromium. What compounds do you get when you take a fuel oil spill and you introduce an alcohol-based surfactant into it? Do you get chemical reactions? At what levels should we worry about contamination in the drinking water? And my answer to that is at any level. If it wasn't in the drinking water before, and it shows up in the drinking water at any level, even if it's one-tenth of the action level, it doesn't belong there. We should be, anything that interferes with us producing the same quality of water five years from now, 10 years from now, as we did last year or five years ago, is a concern to me. So I don't know if that answers your question, but a small part of Ivysol, even if somebody says that it is safe, that it's not going to cause harm to humans at that level, it doesn't belong there. Just because somebody says that one part per billion of 10 in your water isn't going to hurt you, people still shouldn't have to drink it, especially if it was put there by somebody through a course of action. That's my thing. Nobody has a right to introduce contaminants where they aren't already for any reason whatsoever. Everything, everybody's efforts should be geared towards keeping that from happening.
But I think isn't the other concern, if they're not pumping out all the Ivysol, and what Ivysol does is free up the oil, and the problem is that it's in the ground freeing up oil, and they're not pumping it out.
Yes, yes. So you take the Ivysol, you got the oil, so real quick, the last 25 years, oil's sitting on top of the aquifer. The top of the aquifer doesn't flow much. They kind of stay still. And that oil, being thicker than the water, also doesn't move that much, because it's got to flow through soils and sands. But when you take your surfactant and you put it into that groundwater, and its job is to emulsify the oil, the oil's not sitting on top anymore. You've dissolved that oil into the water so that it can travel with the water. That allows it to move. When you put, and you take this chemical and you put it in there, and you're not able to extract it at all, not worrying about it shouldn't be an option. You can say, oh, we think that this monitoring well probably pulled it back. That's not the way things should be working.
They have no assurance that Ivysol doesn't harm your body, other than the fact that that's the guy that manufactured it said that, right?
Right.
There's been no studies made or anything.
There are no long-term studies on this specific product as it relates to human health. The type of surfactant, they can say, is biodegradable in 90 days, does not pose a risk. But the reason he got the patent is these chemicals are put together in a way they haven't been before. And nobody can tell you what the health effects would be. They can tell you what they would expect them to be, kind of like Mentos and Pepsi. Individually, those things are fine. Well, not fine, but they're not going to cause you immediate physical harm, but eat a Mentos and drink a Pepsi. I think we've all seen the videos. When those two mix, it becomes an explosive mixture. So that's the concern. I am not a chemist, and because of that, the possibilities in my mind are endless. Because you hear of how different chemical reactions occur that people didn't expect until they happened. You know, now we know what happens when you chlorinate hydrocarbons and expose them at different temperatures and things like that. We've got a hydrocarbon sitting up here, and we're introducing this solvent to it, and we're taking everybody, we have to take everybody's word for it, that it's not going to cause any harm. So, sorry, I'm ranting again.
All right. I think we could belabor this to death. Obviously, Bob's not comfortable with this, and so when Bob's not comfortable, you know, none of us are really all that comfortable. So that's why we just introduced the local courtesy bill, and we'll continue other strategies. Any other questions? Thanks, Bob. I officially closed the Utilities Commission meeting. It's like 7:57.
Do you have motions?
Do we need a motion?
So moved. I was wondering if you were going to ask for a motion.
Sorry. Is there a motion to close the Utilities Commission meeting?
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? All right. Closed. Okay. I'm going to officially open the mayor and council meeting. It's 7:58 PM. The first order of business is to approve the minutes of the mayor and council meeting of January 4th, 2016.
I would move that the minutes as submitted for January the 4th, 2016 be approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? All right. Any opposed?
All right.
Okay. We unanimously approve the minutes. Operating funds on hand, total operating cash on hand for unrestricted use is $1,888,668.77. In our restricted fund for waterfront initiatives, we have $192,740 for a grand total of $2,073,408.77. Our third order of business is the payment of the bills. Is there a motion to pay the bills?
I'll move to pay the bills as submitted.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed?
I didn't get my request answered for business card. I'd like to know the vendor.
All right.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Okay, we kind of unanimously approve the payment of the bills. Unfortunately, I'm sorry for this omission, but we do have a police report this evening.
Jim, would you...
I said the business cards, that is the vendor.
I know, I know, but you want to break down the charges.
Oh, the charges, okay.
Everybody got the email in between meetings explaining the business card thing, it's the name of the business. It's not a business card. You're not making cards for everybody's business. Sorry.
It's okay. You're going to work this out with Linda?
Yeah. Well, actually, I want to sort of do what she says and show you on the bill what the, you know, breakdown of what they are, as you would of anything else.
Chief Baker, take it away.
I was thinking we're going to give you the pass delay.
Sorry.
It's okay, nothing personal. I'd like to present the stats for December 2015 for the Chestertown case. Our administrative hours were 23 to 2%. Our criminal investigations were 41 hours for 3%. Our accident investigations were 12 with 1%. Vehicle patrol, 690 hours, that yield of 53%. Foot patrol was 125 hours, which was 10% overtime. Training, 15 hours for 1%, work, 28 for 2%. And our overtime was 73 hours, and that was 6% overtime. We made 19 of all the arrests, and that involves 50 separate charges taken down. That was nine charges each for burglary and nine charges for theft, eight for assault, four for sexual crimes, three each for CDS, three for FOA, two each for DWI-related forgery, false document, and reckless endangerment, and one each for bad checks, FDA, home invasion, obstructing and hindering, road and vagabond, and escape from confinement. I would add a note on the escape from confinement, that was a warrant that we had for many, many years, and a gentleman returned from California, and we had word he was here, and we snatched him up, and that resulted from a home detention... He was on home detention, he left home detention, so that was his escape from confinement. It wasn't the guy that got out of our custody. We had two juvenile arrests resulting in two charges, which both were assaults. We had 12 Part 1 offenses, and we cleared five by arrest, and we cleared one by exception. We had 17 Part 2 offenses, we cleared 10 by arrest, and we had three that were unfounded. Our vehicle citations were 38, our warnings were 194, and our red speed citations were 264. Again, I pointed out like the last maybe three months that those red speed citations are staying down, so maybe we can hope that the public has gotten...
Yeah, that's probably as low as we've been. We accept the time that it was broken for a part of the month.
Yes, sir.
And for a month of December, that's not bad.
Yeah, now, and I might ask, I have my annual report basically prepared, but when I see that the next meeting, but I have a chart on the annual report so you can see month to month where red speed goes, and it clearly brings it down to the last three months. Like I said, maybe we'll get the message. We broke our overtime down. We had 25% extended patrol. Our court was 42, training was eight, and our shift coverage was 25%. You know, it was only on 73 hours of 6%. Word break down, we had calls for service, 3% award one, 39% award two, 26 award three, and 29 award four, and outside of jurisdiction was just almost 3% breaking. Our calls for service down by time of day, busiest time of day was 2 to 3 o'clock, and pretty close to 3 to 4 o'clock, it's just about the same. And our busiest day of the week is Saturday. And if I might, I wanted to bring to your attention, I'm pleased to say, that it is our intention to move into the new building February 2nd. We've scheduled that, we've got our technology sort of lined up that way, and we'll physically move the second. It's my hopes of soon after we could have you there, maybe before meeting, if you had an interest, just to see what we had going on there. We're thankful to be doing that, and finally it's coming to fruition.
Great. Any questions for Chief Baker?
No, I just want to make... I congratulate you that foot patrol was 10%, which I'm always glad to see in two-figure, and overtime is 6%, which is as low as it's been this year. So, I think that's great, too, especially since December.
Thank you, sir. And we will be ready if we get some help.
All right.
I also want to thank you for helping us, the Marina in District Court. We have a semi-abandoned yacht on land and one out in the river, and you and the Department of Natural Resources officer helped us in District Court get... What did we end up with?
Well, there's a warrant for his arrest because he didn't show up for court.
This person bought a boat at auction and then just lived in it at the Marina. And when we were closing in on getting a bill of sale on it, he disappeared and locked it. So, it's really kind of an impossible case. They don't have a lot of value when they're stripped, so thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that brings us to the town manager's report, Bill Lengerson.
Okay, it's really short. I have sent you all two different versions of a food truck revision ordinance, one which sort of follows Liz Gross's concerns that it's ironic that we have an ordinance that exempts food trucks from the ordinance and then puts them through licensing procedures in a licensing ordinance. Because she's not here tonight, we're going to defer the passage of that bill. I wish, I would like you to look over what you have and correct it for the way you each feel as far as whether they're permanent locations or moving locations or whatever. I think it is time, though, to cite them and at least bring them up in our ordinances. I like the version, the longer version, where we called the pedaling, soliciting, and food truck ordinance. It has a process which I think is going to make you a lot happier if you have a rolling truck come from far away and you question maybe the nature of the use that drives into town.
This ordinance is written, though, and is, in essence, says we will have them on the street, and I'm personally not in favor of that, and when it comes time to vote, I'm going to make that very clear.
That's the details I'm talking about. I've noticed that there's been discussion about, you know, at least there've been emails back and forth about the concerns and hearing from restaurant owners in between. So, please don't just get locked in on that because it's going to be your ordinance, not mine. I drafted it, sort of given you a framework for where I think it should go, but if they're permanent locations or they're moving locations or whatever, that's up to you, and that's a detail.
Well, I think one council person feels like it should be on private property, and I feel like he shouldn't have it at all, and I'm not sure how Liz varies back and forth. Of course, Sam is for it, and I think the mayor may be, but I think it's going to come down to a question of whether we have them at all, or maybe we put them on private property or whatever we do, so...
I think, two things. One is I know that a lot of restaurant owners want a chance to have their opinions heard to us. I know that I see one food truck owner in the audience. I'm sure he's very interested as well. So, do you guys want to say anything?
Say something.
Okay, go ahead. Paul?
Thank you. I don't have a... Paul Hanley, the owner of Blue Hare and Cafe downtown for the last 18 years. I have a lot of notes with me tonight because I wasn't sure exactly which way this was going to go. I guess the bottom line is that the restaurant owners, managers, et cetera, in the area would like the opportunity, if you'll allow it, to be a part of this process. I know that there's been some work prior, but I'm not sure that we all completely understand exactly where things are and how they've been arrived, and we're already at drafting legislation. So, hopefully, we're not too late. I guess a lot has happened in the month of December where a lot of us are distracted with holiday parties and New Year's Eve, et cetera, et cetera. Then the meeting was changed, of course, from yesterday being closed to today, and a bunch of folks couldn't make it in. Hopefully, we really feel that this food truck issue could change the food service dynamic in town. We'd like an opportunity to explore it amongst ourselves. What I've found is that, of course, there are a lot of, a number of restaurant people that are just flat-out against us. They'd rather just go away. And then there's others that, you know, we're business people. They want to be involved with business, and they say, well, if it complasts the permitting, why not? You know, and that's just their blanket statement. And I've talked to a couple of those folks, too, and I've said, yes, but do you realize ABC might happen? Or where will we be three, four, five years from now with different operators? Will it become part of the new Marina? Will it become a food court at the foot of High Street? And those restaurant people said, hmm, I didn't think of that. Hmm, you know, and I'm not sure I'd be for it. I'm not sure I'm against it either. So, I was kind of asked to be here tonight for just one thing. Can we push this back? Will you allow us some time, a month or two, to gather thoughts and ideas and either individually or collectively come to the mayor and council with definite listed concerns? Those might be the setback requirements. Enforcement is one that has crossed my mind. If we were to say 200 feet and there was somebody that just was going to park anywhere they want because, hey, it's Friday night and nobody's around, is, do we have to lodge a complaint? Or will the police enforce it and have them move? None of this, I don't know, has been discussed or whether it would be included in an ordinance. There are issues of trash removal or recycling, where would the restrooms be located? Will there be a limited number of licenses? Or will there be an open-ended amount? So, and I'm not even looking at my notes on this, but, well, if I could just put that aside and just ask whether the mayor and council would allow us a period of time, and if we could maybe state the time, could we get 60 days to come back to the town?
It's fine with me.
I don't think there's a big rush. I mean, I think, I think the way this kind of evolved is, we currently do have food trucks. We have two food trucks. They both operate on private property, and when we initially... Did we pass a temporary ordinance?
Well, no, not a temporary ordinance, but we approved them.
We approved it on private property, and so we had said when we did that we would reevaluate, I think, after six months, and we kind of never really did that. So, we're about a year, at least a year later now, and one of the owners of the food trucks basically isn't happy with the spot that they have, and they would...
I'd rather be on the water, too.
I understand. So, the question was raised, could there be specific public areas where they could set up? And that's kind of where we are now. We're in the middle of that discussion. Are we okay with them on private property? Would we be okay with them setting up in certain designated locations that are owned by the town that are maybe a little more central? Do we want food trucks at all? I think that's kind of where we are in the debate, and I think, I know Linda in particular, and Marty's... Linda definitely wanted to talk to the businesses like you're saying. I don't think there's any hurry because I think we can keep going on business as usual for at least a couple more months. I don't think that would hurt anybody.
No, I think, in fact, if I might digress or throw some fuel on the fire, maybe that's one of the things that a lot of the restaurant people are thinking. I talked to the chef today, do we order for this weekend or not? Big blizzard coming. But we're going to be there paying those salaries and mortgages, rents, and real estate taxes, no matter what, whether it snows or not. But if this develops further, will those food trucks be operating this weekend, or are they just fair weather? And that can be kind of difficult for those of us that are trying to pay our real estate taxes that basically pave the roads where these folks want to park now. The other thing that I guess is I'm just rambling here, every one of these trucks needs a generator, all right? It keeps the product cold and the cooking equipment running. And I brought up this notion in the very beginning before we, before the first discussion came to, and I was told by a council member, as long as that noise ordinance, we already have noise ordinances, and as long as the generators met it, so be it. Okay, well, it meets code, so be it. But now we're going to have five trucks around the park during Farmer's Market with five generators running. Is that what we want? Will that change the dynamic? So, anyway, it's issues like this that I think that my colleagues and I need to really kind of hash around and put these questions forth to the council, so...
So, do you think 60 days would be an adequate amount of time for you and your colleagues, your peers, to come up with a game plan?
I think that'd be a very gracious start, Mr. Mayor, and if we run into issues, we'll certainly come back to you with that.
Okay.
You know, if things are, you know, it's tough sometimes chasing.
Yes, it is.
But, thank you.
I think it's fair to say that the cost of your product is based on your cost. So, if you don't have to pay insurance and rent and taxes and so forth, you could really sell your product a little bit cheaper, and there's a way of undercutting those people that have to make those costs. That all bears on my thoughts on the problem.
Thank you, Marty. It's exactly right. My real estate taxes are $6,200 a year, which is basically, by quick math, a little over $500 a month. I know it doesn't all go to the city, and I'm not prepared to quote those numbers, you probably know them, but a very big chunk of that, a couple hundred bucks a month, go to the city from our real estate taxes. So, we have to, of course, build that into our burger, something that, let's say, we could put out for $10, someone else might be able to put out for 6, or whatever the numbers might be. So, I don't see it as a level playing field, and, you know, the storefronts are what makes the thread that makes the fabric of the town. I'm not sure that food trucks working in the central areas are going to add any thread to that fabric, but will they take away?
I mean, we've had two operating already. Have you noticed an impact to your business at all?
No, this is on private property, and, you know, from my point of view, you know, landowners' rights, et cetera, if they have met the code as it exists now and they've signed leases, I wasn't necessarily excited about that, Sam, but now that it's done and it's, it meets the code and it's the law, we move on. But now we're coming back for another bite at the apple. Mission creep. You know, if a year ago, all of this was asked for at one time, would mayor and council have said, sure, bring the trucks into the center town? Sure, bring them down to our new Marina? Sure, bring them to the foot of High Street? Probably not. But now that we're in, we're not making enough money, we're coming back to the council, can you help us out? And suddenly, it's changing. So, before all this happens, we'd just like the hospitality industry to kind of evaluate and weigh in a bit. If it's the consensus that, you know, it should be allowed, then, you know, it moves from there, but I have a feeling it's going to be quite the opposite, so...
Can I ask a question before Kevin? Are you going to be representing just the downtown restaurants?
To tell you the truth, ma'am, I'm not sure. We're just talking to the different restaurants, whether we come in individually, collectively. I don't know that I can really answer that there now.
Okay.
We're kind of at the infant stages of pulling people together. I know there's one big restaurant in town that, in the very beginning of this, he was interviewed and said, sure, go ahead. He's one of the biggest opponents of this now because his opinion has evolved. He's examined more of the facts and notions of food trucks in downtown areas, so...
Kevin?
Okay, I'm Kevin, and I'm Papa Smurf Barbecue. Now, with these food trucks, I have one. I don't know if you guys think that we're making a whole lot of money... I don't know if you guys think that we're making a whole lot of money. No, we're barely, barely making it. It's only been a year, we're barely, barely making it. I only come downtown when somebody asks me to come downtown to support the town or whatever, the Harry Potter festival or whatever. I mean, all the other food trucks during the Harry Potter Day, all the other food trucks didn't show up because of, because of the bad weather. Well, I went to, I've been to the health department. I've got everything that your restaurant has for my truck, everything. I've got all the licenses. I have to pay fees, I have to pay pedaling fees, I have to pay insurance, I gotta, I gotta, I have to get bonded. My food truck is no different from your restaurant. The only difference is mine is on wheels, okay? Now, now the downtown thing is, look, we would love to come downtown. I'm just trying to say this. I'm not trying to take any business from you guys. I don't come near your restaurant. I don't pass any flies around near your restaurant. I try to respect you guys as much as possible. But you guys gotta respect us, too, because we're trying to get in the business, and some of the people in this town do love our food. They do love our food. Some of them come like, um, I'm up there on, on High Street around the circle. I have plenty of people asking, "Why aren't you downtown? Saturday morning, Farming Market, why aren't you there?" Well, you know what? I'm really not allowed downtown for right now, only when they have, but you got farmer's market people coming downtown. When you have the tea party, we have two food trucks that's here in town, and we can't even come to the tea party. I mean, I would think that that's fair, no, I mean, we kick out money, just like, my truck cost me 30, at least $30,000. I mean, it's not a cheap job. But I'm just trying to say is, is, look, I was an army cook for 14 years. I'm a veteran, so I should be able to, I should be able to, to actually come out and open a business just like you opened a business. Maybe right now, I cannot afford a storefront like you do. I tried to get a storefront in the beginning, but guess what? It was too much for me. It was too much. People was asking too much rent for, you know? So if this works, it works for us. Now, the, now the lady with the taco truck asked me or whatever. I don't know what goes on, because I'm only open right now on Saturdays and Sundays. I haven't been down here unless somebody requests me for crazy day or something like that. That's the only time I come downtown. So the food trucks cannot be taken away, and there's only two right now, cannot be taken away from, from you guys' business. I know my food truck matters, because guess what? I still have to pay bills. I have to do the same thing as you, and I have to pay taxes and all that, you guys. I'm not upset at you, guys. I know that you guys have to make a living, but I thought that, you know, downtown should be for, for everybody, and we have a whole lot of constituents and everything, and asking us, you know, "Why aren't you all downtown with everybody else? We're way up in the corner somewhere, out in no man's land." Okay? I mean, of course, I would even love if we don't have to stay on that lot, but we have to pay the people to stay on that lot. So we're paying, so we're paying somebody to stay on the lot, and we can go to another street or something like that. I mean, I work in Washington DC. I work, I work at the United States Center Building. Now, I'll tell you this much, there's tons of food trucks downtown. There's tons of food trucks by the monument, by Union Station. Okay? I mean, that's historic, that's, that's a historic phase also. I mean, I mean, we should be able to work together, okay? But, I mean, when you have a big tea party and you have all these other things, and your own two food trucks that's supposed to try to support your town and can't even get into it, that's a during shame, you know? I can see why I have to be frightened back and forth to go on the other side of the road. Our generators are not that loud, you know what I mean? I'm, you know, I haven't seen an ordinance, I don't know, this is the first time I ever knew about another ordinance came up. I mean, you guys haven't heard from me. I see you, ma'am, I say, "How you doing?" I see you, Linda, I say, "How you doing?" I just go on my own business, I do what I need to do. I see, I don't bother nobody. But, but she's right. I mean, we're barely, barely making it. It's not like we're killing everybody coming to our food truck. It's not like that. I have people from the courthouse that, "Hey, where you been at? Why don't you come down here?" I'm like, "You know what? We can't come down here." They set the rule that we, at a certain spot, we stay at our certain spot. And they set those rules because of two things. They want to make sure that kids stay safe, that they don't cross the street, get hit by a car, right? Make sure that people can get in and get out. I follow, I follow those rules and stuff like that. I mean, I'm just trying to say, if we cannot come downtown every weekend or a weekend, make it every other weekend. Give us something, then give us, then not giving us anything at all. That's what I'm saying. Something, something is better than nothing.
I think there's obviously a lot of discussion that needs to be had.
Just one little quick thing. I, you know, rate in all my long-winded notes here, I forgot to read number one. This is not personal.
Yeah, I know.
This is not, I, you know, I stopped by and had a burger. I replaced the Saturday and might have had, it is one tasty burger. But it's not about tacos, it's not about Ashley, it's about, this is a zoning change. This is where we're going to be three, four, five years from now, whether anyone who's currently operating a food truck is even still here. Some of my concerns are those big professional trucks that you mentioned in DC, that Chestertown is suddenly going to be open for business, and the big sophisticated trucks that can step it up will start to come to town.
Yeah, I think that's a good point, because I think this, this ordinance is not just about the two existing food trucks.
Not at all.
It, it has to apply to anybody that owns a food truck.
Right. The trucks in DC is no, it's not bigger than my truck. Trucks in DC is only 16 feet.
Do you have a bathroom on your truck?
I have a bathroom on my truck.
Do you have a bathroom where people can wash their hands if they want to wash their hands before they eat a sandwich?
I have a bathroom on my truck.
Someplace, if I come up to get a sandwich and I feel like, you know, geez, I need to, I, I wash my hands before I eat every meal, is there a place where I can go in and wash my hands?
Do you use it on your hand? Do you rub it on your hand? That's what hand sanitizer is for. Right? But in my truck, I have four sinks.
Okay.
I have four sinks.
All right. I think we're going to do this 60 days from now. Maybe we should wait and have this discussion 60 days.
I personally think 60 days is too long. I mean, right now, the ordinance as it stands, we are talking about three sides of a park, limited between the hours of 10:00 AM and 3:00 PM. I mean, do we really need 60 days to go over that? I personally don't think Chestertown is all of a sudden going to be flooded with food trucks. We have two. I don't know about, you know, the decision-making process of going to grab a bite to eat, but I'm not going to make the decision to go to a fine dining restaurant like the Blue Heron or a food truck, you know? If anything, it's going to take away from the business of, you know, say McDonald's, for example.
How about, how about if we target the first meeting in March, which is kind of in between?
So, but Sam, how about the sandwiches that are being made at Evergreen? It would compete directly with those.
Perhaps, but it's also going to drive foot traffic downtown, and that's what, that is what Chestertown needs. We need as much foot traffic coming downtown, because going to a food truck, you might end up passing a sale in one of our stores.
I answered that before. I can't imagine sitting in my living room and saying, "I think I'm going to go downtown and get a sandwich from a food truck." I'm not going to do that. But if I'm a tourist walking around town and I'm looking for a place for a sandwich, and do I go into a place that's been paying taxes, $4,000 a year? Or do I go into a place that don't pay any property taxes and grab a sandwich? I just don't think it's a level playing field for those people who, if, if they just lose enough that they lay off one waitress, that's one waitress that doesn't have a job because we let a food truck.
But you're, you're assuming, just like Kevin said, you're assuming that food trucks have no overhead.
Yeah.
And they clearly do. They clearly do. They have to pay for their food truck, they have to pay for all of their food, just like restaurants do, they have to abide by all the licensing procedures.
He pays $30,000 for the truck.
They have overhead.
Try and buy a restaurant, you can't even buy the kitchen for $30,000.
Yeah, but he's operating as an individual, and he doesn't have-
I also have to have the same kitchen that he has to prepare my food. It's not only that truck, I have the same kitchen that he has.
If you're out there on private property, I have no problem at all.
But then what's, what's the difference of having a food truck on private property and having a food truck with extremely limited hours, operating on three sides of a park? They still have to abide by setbacks from our restaurant. At the end of the day, you're still going to have a food truck.
I told you the reason for it, and not only is, people like the Blue Heron and, and Plaid Again, Sam, and those places are going to be hurt, Rural Farms and those people all pay taxes and they all sell sandwiches.
All right, look, obviously, you guys aren't, are never going to come to an agreement here. Here's what I'd like to do. I'd like to target the meeting of Monday, March 21st, to discuss this, like, and try to make a decision. And the decision will be, we can basically continue with, we can either eliminate food trucks altogether from Chestertown, which I personally don't agree with, but we could do that. We could basically re-up the existing ordinance that we have, which currently allows for food trucks on private property, or we can explore one of the proposals that we have on the table, which is allowing food trucks to basically be open at certain designated spots downtown at hours that we specify with regulations that we would list in the ordinance. So does, does March 21st sound like a reasonable date for you guys?
And everybody, the media has these, and I hope they print them, but anyone else can get the two versions here, and I said they're detailed. I don't know where the marina came from, by the way, it's not, it wasn't from the town. That was never a thought. It's okay. I threw that out there. I see this beautiful new marina with a huge parking lot. Five years from now, the trucks- Paul, when people hear you say that, they think that that's been a plan.
All of a sudden, it came from us, you know?
Oh, no, 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 no. It's okay, it's okay.
In the rumor mill.
If I had a food truck, I'd like to be at the marina, is what I'm saying.
So, anyway, between now and March 21st, you can continue to operate as you've been doing all along, and we'll have this, we'll have the discussion. I think at that point, we'll have to decide one way or the other.
Mayor, I want to say one thing. I think that people that you've already authorized to go on private sites, that's not an issue. So I, I don't think he should feel like, "Okay, March 21st is my deadline at that site."
Oh, yeah.
The second thing I want to say is that you come down and you're with events, and there are a lot more events, and I think Tea Party has a plan for you this year on Friday night. I don't know, that's one of the, one of the organizers asked me about.
Finalizing.
A plan, a plan, a plan. But, but I think that you shouldn't feel threatened about doing what we've approved you to do. This plan, this ordinance, once read, it still takes weeks to, to be passed. I think all parties should see it first, and there's issues in that about locations, specific locations or not, or generators and noise or not. It's already in there, so please take a look at it. The media can help us by putting it, the text in, in one of their publications, that's great. Kevin, I'll make sure you get one. Paul, make sure you get one.
All right, I think we should move on, because we could probably beat this to death for another hour if we wanted to. But thanks, thank you guys for your input. Appreciate you, both of you coming tonight.
The draft ordinance for energy conservation, literally just a word. We had energy conservation codes in the 70s and 80s, but they were melted into the international code, so they're actually there when we passed building and housing codes. Cases asked me to also put them back in the energy conservation codes, because they do exist. It's sort of calling them out, so I'll bring that in. It's just moving from one Boca code to the code we're in now. So I'll bring that to the next meeting, since that's not controversial. The, this came in today, and I, I don't think we have another meeting before this meeting, a community planning meeting. It's going to be held upstairs on Monday, January 25th at 6:00 PM regarding the Bailey Park and possible locations for youth recreation area playground for kids. And that, we're, we're just about to dredge at the marina. The barge came in pieces on Friday and was launched, and I think tomorrow morning, they start to excavate spoil.
Who actually doing it?
The, the low bidder.
High tide.
High tide.
Okay. And he, and he made that commitment?
The commitment was put in writing. They, they based it for all the work, is, was the low bid. And it's also recommended, you saw by the correspondents, the state recommended that we take that bid, because it was the lowest full bid.
And he's, will be done probably by February 15th?
They, they're actually going to stay here in a motel while they do the work, so they think they can actually finish in 10 working days.
Wow.
Weather permitting.
Yeah.
Because they'll have nothing else to do while they're up here, so.
Might as well suck out some mud.
I called every reference that they gave and a couple that they didn't, and they've got really strong endorsements for completing the work in a neat fashion. And as I said, they were here almost immediately. They went and saw, ramble about the spoil site almost immediately, so it's obvious that-
Did they haul the dredge up there, or?
They hauled, they hauled it up in two pieces, and we launched it with the travel lift.
Okay, okay. I was just wondering how, whether they floated it all the way from Ocean City or not.
And they, also, you can see that Delmarva Power has wrapped up the submarine cable project. I had a meeting, the last meeting I had with them on the site was last week about the, the cuts in the street, and the, I have a $200,000 bond from Delmarva to ensure that that gets repaired correctly. And we're going to let it settle for a while, because underneath it was a sort of a luvial fill over time, and so you'll, you'll notice that notch in the road, almost the length of this room, where the cable went underground. So I think that's the best solution for all, let it settle, settle, settle. And also, we may be raising the grade in that area, so. But I did ask them to overlay the, the street, the whole section that they, where they had small things occur, and I think that was agreed to, too. That's the end of my report.
Okay, that leads to the mayor's report. I'll try to be brief. First, is a reminder that tomorrow evening at 7 o'clock here, there's a public hearing on a C-3 zoning text amendment proposal. Will that be preceding the normal planning commission meeting?
Yes.
So that'll be in here, and the planning commission will be present, I'm assuming?
Yes, and that's good.
And that, that's in this room, not upstairs?
And so are we leading that portion of the session?
Yes. It would be a mayor and council meeting at 7:00.
Okay. And that's tomorrow here, 7:00. As you all know, on January 10th, we had a meeting, a community meeting at the Chestertown Volunteer Fire Company about the current status of our hospital, what direction the, the facility is heading, and what we feel like we need to advocate for. We were hoping for a good turnout, and we got one. We, it was probably the biggest turnout I've seen for a community event since I've been here, since 1992. We had exactly 300 people in there, and we probably turned away at least another 200. So, and to me, that was the most important thing, is that with all of our Eastern Shore delegation there, all three of our county commissioners there, all of us there, they saw in no uncertain terms that the community is very, very concerned about the direction this hospital seems to be heading, and, you know, speaker after speaker got up and said how important our inpatient services are, and also the incredible economic impact it would have on our community and really on the region if the hospital were to eliminate inpatient services and essentially become a stop on the way to Easton. So we'll see if UMMS and Shore Regional Health stick to their mission of, you know, putting patients first and listening to their constituents, but if nothing else, it sent a very clear message to our delegation that this is a big issue for them to advocate for our hospital retaining as many services as we can. And along those lines, there is a follow-up meeting. Again, this has kind of been interesting for me, because all these meetings have really been led by the doctors and the staff at the hospital. We've been making Town Hall available for their sort of strategy meetings, and there's another one this Thursday at 7:00 PM on the second floor of Town Hall. You know, none of us are required to be there. I will be there, the doctors will all be there.
But that's, that's a strategy meeting, not a public meeting.
It's basically to try to brainstorm about, okay, that was a great meeting, and where do we go from here, and what, what are the next steps to keep this in the headlines for us? So that's what that agenda item refers to. There, we did have a resignation from the Historic District Commission. I believe we're one member short. If you guys have any folks in the community that you think are qualified and might be interested in filling that, we need to find someone to nominate to fill that. I know a lot of times, we love if we have a former architect- I know a lot of times we love if we have a former architect or somebody with a history, interest in history, or especially historic architecture, that's kind of the ideal. I'll put my brain to it, but if you have a good name, send it to me.
Do they have to live...
They need to live in Chester Town. Yes, they do. Lastly, this is not on the agenda, but there is a nationwide competition called the Small Business Revolution that are outgoing marketing and economic development coordinators interested in having us pursue. Can you tell us just real briefly about this?
Yes, it's...
You mean outgoing young...
I mean, she's like really dynamic and outspoken.
It's a short career. Yeah, this is a, it's a national company, Deluxe. It's the name you see a lot of checks. And they're moving into more small business services, like web services and consulting and things like that. So it's a marketing scheme on their part, a marketing campaign on their part. They've done a lot already about small businesses. So now they're moving from small businesses to small towns. And if you look at their website, there's a wonderful video. They really understand the importance of the small business to the small town, that it is the heart, it is our economy. So the competition is for any small town with 50,000 or fewer residents across the country. We need to nominate Chester Town. And then the winning town gets a half million dollars in consulting and actual investment in the town, in the downtown Main Street area. So I feel like it's worth competing for. It doesn't require anything except some essays. And, you know, I can write one, and maybe the mayor, anyone who wants to, or me to write one. We can make sure we get an official nomination. And then it's up to anyone who wants to go on the website and nominate Chester Town. And the more nominations we can get, the more attention we'll get, and we might have a shot at becoming the finalists. And then when they pick their towns to be finalists, then it'll be one of those public, how many people vote for which town? So, yeah, it's brilliant marketing on their part, but it would be great marketing for our town, too, if we had a presence in this competition. And they're pairing up with one of the Shark Tank guys, Robert...
Hurdjevic or...
Hurdjevic, something like that. So he would be working with the town and the small businesses. It's a chance for our small businesses to get consulting and marketing expertise from the Shark Tank entrepreneur. It's all good. Now, the downside is that we've only got a week to do this. They started taking nominations January 11th, and they're due no later than January 28th. So I just wanted to get the council's blessing to go ahead and start sending out some emails. Then we'll play the game if we get to be finalists.
When does the voting start?
Well, the voting is really going to be there. Deluxe experts are going to go through all the essays. I think they're going to look and see how many towns got some action and got a number of nominations. And then they will read through the essays, and they will pick the finalists. I don't even think they studied the website, how many finalists. I think they're waiting to see.
So Kay brought this up to me, and, you know, basically, we, before, I was like, yeah, go for it. We wanted to make you guys aware that this was happening. So are you guys comfortable with Kay? I mean, we really don't have anything to lose. It doesn't cost us any money. And if we become a finalist, even if we aren't the winner, I think that's good PR for the town.
Yeah, they have done quality videos, and I'll send you the link. They do a good job when they go in and profile a small business. It kind of has a nice heart to it. And so I do think it's a good campaign.
What are the essays going to be written about? Is there a specific topic that you have to write, too, or it's just open-ended?
Yeah, they give you guidelines of what they're looking for. They want to hear what is great about the town, what are the challenges the town faces, how would their kind of expertise and investment in the town help the town? So, you know, there's certain criteria that they outline on the website, what they're going to be looking for. And obviously, they want it to be compelling video, so that when they do their video campaigns...
We can throw some characters at that video.
I think we got it all. You know, we're beautiful, we're smart, we've got a lot of, you know, we've got a lot of personalities.
We've got a college.
We've got a college. I think that we have a lot...
We're a contender. Did you have a question, Dan?
Are you writing it?
I will write it.
I thought you were going like this.
No.
Okay.
It's a no-brainer.
Okay. Go for it, Kay. Let me know how I can help. Okay, that concludes my report, board report. So why don't we start with Mr. Stetson over here to my right?
Thank you, Mayor. On January 11th, I did not attend the Chamber's Legislative Breakfast. It's the first time I've missed it, I think, in the eight years I've been on council. This is my ninth year. But I got summoned to grand jury. And it was a question of whether, do your civic duty or go to the... So I did my civic duty, even though I wasn't selected. I kind of knew I wasn't going to be selected. I'm hoping, from what I read in the newspaper, there's a little surplus going around. I'm hoping they're coming around and giving some of that road fuel tax back to the town so... Because the fourth ward is like everybody else's ward. Our roads are suffering pretty bad. So maybe we can get that back and we can clean up our roads. That's probably the number-one complaint I get from my residents is, you know, there's a pothole in front of my house where the road's disintegrating or whatever it may be. And I tell them, we do the best we can, and we're getting to it as we can. I was like the mayor, I was at the hospital meeting. I count, I stopped counting at 300, figured that's all that's true. But I was glad I went 40 minutes early. I thought an interesting comment was when Senator Hershey said, I think it was Senator Hershey said, "If you're under 50 and you're sitting in a chair, please get up and give it to somebody." And I turned around and looked, and nobody got up. I didn't see anybody under 50. One thing about being old, you come early because you know you're going to, if you want to get a seat, you want to get it. And we had our first incident of a dog bite of a person at the dog park, which is really, really kind of disturbing. We've had other dogs. I got scratched one time, I draw blood from a, Paul, it's not just a dog jumping up, but this was an actual dog bite that the person had to end up throwing to the hospital. And unfortunately, the owner of that dog left before he could get her name. It's a young lady, had two dogs, one which was a pit bull mix that bit him. And so if that lady's out there and she happens to be watching this, we really appreciate you coming in. There's certain criteria you have to follow if you dog bite somebody. And we need that information. We need to know whether the dog's had rabies. If he hasn't, he has to be pinned up for 10 days. And I'll tell you, young lady, if I know who you are, you're not welcome back at the dog park because we can't afford to have our people chewed on. And finally, I attended a funeral for Alex Raisin, who was probably one of the leading citizens of our town for so many, many years, did so many, many good things, was a county commissioner on three different occasions, on three different terms. And it was well-attended, and it was, he's going to be missed by everybody. His wit and wisdom was unsurpassed, as far as I'm concerned. And I just thought we needed to make note of his passing. And that concludes Ward 4.
Ward 3 is looking pretty good. Gateway Park is getting a lot of action, I'd say. And it's really exciting seeing that park utilized even before it's officially dedicated. And Bill, you said sometime in March we're going to officially, or earlier, when was that?
Saturday, May 7th, actually.
May 7th?
I've talked to the guys at the Hoyas. They're going to have a bunch of kids there. We're going to cut the ribbon, say a few words, and then play some hoops.
Good.
Are you going to play?
I will spect...
I'm playing. I am playing.
Basketball has never been my thing.
All right, man.
But it's really exciting. So I just appreciate all the hard work you did putting the grants together and working with the county to get that property. So, yeah, you know, it's looking pretty good. We've got that nice roundabout. We've got the park, so now we just need some sidewalks.
I'll come by and show you how to dunk, Sam, if you want me to.
Okay.
It's still kind of tentative, but I think, let me pop on here.
And that's it for Ward 3?
I think we were thinking 11-ish on Saturday, May 7th.
All the hardware started to come in today, benches, the tables, and stuff.
Well, look, it's so much better than looking at the fall-down bar or whatever. What was that bar called?
Walk-in fallout?
Yeah.
It's by no means finished, but I'm glad to see it getting used.
The fact that there's already kids going there and playing basketball is a great sign. My son went there the other day, and there were like 12 kids playing, like, all over the place. And it was really cool. Really exciting.
You build it, they'll come.
Well, people forget, that's where a lot of our families live, on that end of town. And there's been no recreation there really in the town's history. So, you know, it makes sense.
And the interesting thing is, it looks like a lot of them are walking, too.
Yes.
Especially with the rail trail going there now.
Exactly.
Because you see a lot of kids and people at the park, but you don't see a lot of cars in the actual parking lot. So it shows that they're taking advantage of the infrastructure that we've put down, and they're moving. They're getting there.
It's a good thing. It's going to be a popular place.
That's what they should do.
That's what they should do, yep.
Linda?
Okay, I wanted to ask Kay something. I go to the commissioner's meeting, and Bernadette with tourism said you'll be meeting with her soon.
Yes, I mean, I met with her on a number of dates.
Well, one of the topics was the bridge closing. And can you come to us and tell us, you know, did you go to the meeting in Annapolis this night?
Yeah.
Okay. I was just wondering if you were going to cover this, with the meeting in Annapolis and the bridge closing, and how Annapolis had made creative ways of, you know...
Oh, that's interesting. I just thought you meant Annapolis. There was a meeting where people from Eastport came here and had a good meeting with him about all of the crazy, wonderful things that they did when they closed the bridge between Eastport and Annapolis. And they just had a lot of fun with it. And he said it was the best marketing thing that could have happened to them.
Okay.
I don't know if it's going to be the best thing that ever happened to Chester Town, but our plan is to try to make a little lemonade out of this and see what we can do in a fun way in terms of special events and some messaging that lets people have it. Chester Town's going to be very open even though the bridge is going to be closed.
Okay.
So then we are on that, Paul, so I wasn't sure what you were going to say.
Yeah, sorry. I thought she said she went to Annapolis. Sorry.
And we're putting together a little committee of people who want to be part of this planning.
Great.
Some fun, interesting things.
Okay, thanks. The Historical Society is going to have every third Wednesday at noon in its brown bag at the Boardley. And it's going to be a lot of different historical topics, which will be coming up. And then the Kent County Chamber of Commerce is having their 2015 Excellence in Business Award Gala on January 29th from 6:00 to 9:00 at the Garfield. And the speakers are Brian and Leslie, who are the new owners of WCTR. And then don't forget, the Chester Bra is February 6th. And if you would like to volunteer, you can email me, and I'll send you to the person who's taking care of volunteers. So hopefully, and it's going to be up in the High Street section in front of People's Bank this year. So everybody can get your... You can go to Dollar Tree. They have a lot of masks and beads and everything you need for Chester Bra. So that's my report.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments from the audience this evening?
I have a question, and it's going to be a little bit lengthy. And this is for you, Marty. Just bear with me a little bit. I'm trying to unpack your logic a little bit about the food trucks. Every Saturday, we have a farmer's market. And I get to hear you complain that the people that visit that farmer's market don't have a place to wash their hands, or I get to hear you complain that the people who buy produce from the people at the farmer's market are taking away business from the grocery stores. And when I hear you talk about favoring the brick-and-mortar shops over the food trucks, what you're saying is, or the way I hear it is, that only people with deep pockets could participate.
Now, what was your question?
My question is, it seems, how do you reconcile my statement that it seems, when we unpack what you said, that only the people with deep pockets and have storefronts could participate in the economy in downtown? That's what it sounds like when we unpack it. So how do you address that?
I address it just like I addressed it. I think they need a level playing field, and they're not getting it with the food trucks down there competing with them. Now, that's my answer to you. I don't know how to make it any clearer. They have employees, they have insurance, they have a building, they have rent, they have all those things that go into making their product cost so much. And they have to make a living, make a profit, support their family.
But if you look at economies of scale, though, what the revenue, the net revenue coming out of a food truck is not the same net revenue that's coming out of the Blue Heron. And I was just talking to Kevin here. He said last Sunday, after all his expenses, he made $32. And I just don't see how that's making a huge dent or having a huge impact on the brick-and-mortar business.
That's because, you know, you're talking about apples and oranges. It's where he is. But if he's down here in the park, and I'm a tourist in town on this May, and I'm walking around and I want a sandwich, I may not go to the restaurant. If he misses out on that good Saturday, then he may have to lay off a waitress, or he may, that might be the point where he just breaks off. They have to stay open all winter long. They have to pay those fees all winter long. It's an economic thing, yes.
But how do you know that the playing field isn't level? I mean, I was just talking to Kevin. He says he has a lot of expenses to operate his truck. And sometimes he goes out there and he doesn't actually make it. He loses money in the day. So you're making these trucks out to sound like there's this huge vacuum that's taking away his business from the restaurants.
They're not a huge vacuum right now. And in fact, if it came, push came to shove, and it came, I'm not in favor of food trucks, but I would certainly be fine with Kevin where he is if he's on private property and he pays a lease fee. The same with the young lady. I don't, I eat most of my meals at home, so it's not like I'm a restaurant person who goes to a lot of restaurants. I just don't do that. I stay home to eat.
I just have a quick question. So you're saying that it's fine for us to lose money? It's fine for us to lose money and not the restaurants?
Okay, all right. I kind of agree with the mayor when he said, what was the date?
March 21st.
Right. You can come in here and grill me all you want on March 21st on this subject, but I think you're just beating a dead horse right now, so.
All right, we'll move on. Mr. Massey?
John Massey, 100 East Campus Avenue. On this past Friday, through reasons I'm not here to discuss, the Kent County Middle School had to be evacuated. Their safe haven is the Chester Town Fire Company. To get the students from the middle school to the fire company, they walk up Campus Avenue, come down Philosopher's Terrace...
Isn't that awful?
...to the school, to the fire company. That's fine, except there's no sidewalk between Campus Avenue and Kent Street. So you've got students walking in traffic.
Very good point. I've been here eight years, and I've been bringing that up. We need a...
Now, I remember, excuse me, I remember when the college was given and bought the Board of Education property and took the fence down and all that. There was some rumbling about sidewalk being placed, because a sidewalk does need to be It's a question.
Yeah. I think it's an opportunity, too, John. Joe Holt was here at a meeting or two ago, and I think now's the time to get that easement for that side of the property if it still doesn't have geothermal wells underneath it and plan a sidewalk on that side for at least three quarters of the block. I think the time is right to ask formally. We've talked about it before, but we've never penned it, put pen to ink yet, or inked it.
Was that a part of the original planning commission approved plan, site plan?
No, but it was something that we discussed if and when the college got it from the county. We discussed it with the county a little bit, actually, when they owned it. The idea of shaving those banks and putting a sidewalk on the side of the road there and at least getting most of the block. Do think that other safe havens might be explored by the... Do think that other safe havens might be explored by the middle school, such as Harren Point or something like that. It's a tough...
Can I say something as a school board member? My understanding is Harren Point was the first choice, but when the calls, when the Robo, when the threats came out Friday, both of the nursing homes in Chestertown and the visitor center also got one. And there was some concern that Harren Point was going to get one. So that's why they didn't go to Harren Point, is what I've been led to believe.
Well, thank you.
Wouldn't it be prudent to at least change the route to get to the fire hall, though? Like, maybe if they went to Washington Avenue and turned left and where there is a sidewalk?
No, I'm not debating that. We haven't, as a board, haven't had a chance to talk about it since it happened, but I'll bring it up that maybe...
Or maybe even the college might make some sense. No?
Or I had mentioned the college. Liz Moore, Assistant President of the Vice President of the College, told me Friday the reason the college did not go to the colleges, she didn't want to cross in Washington Avenue.
Yeah.
But they probably hadn't thought about the idea about sidewalks, but that's...
No sidewalk on Philosopher Terrace has been a thorn in my... I walk down to the office here a lot from my home, and I do not walk on Philosopher's Terrace because there's just not enough room there and people. But it is full of kids.
It's a tough issue because the road as it currently exists really isn't wide enough to take away the width that you need for a sidewalk. So it really requires cooperation on private property owners, the biggest of which is now the college. So that might be a discussion worth pursuing.
Well, I'll send the...
Block of sidewalk in Chestertown.
Yeah, yeah.
If you want, I'll send the email tonight because it's come up twice in the last month. And I just think it's either they can do it or they don't. But I think engineering-wise, there's a couple telephone poles that are right next to the curb. I've looked at this a lot. But hopefully, the bank could be slowed so it wasn't such an intense bank and without hitting the geothermal lines that are not far from it.
Well, you need to shave that bank, otherwise you would have to make the sidewalk a lot wider.
Or you put it high up, but then have it come down. It's really, you know, you want to keep the handicap accessible.
And I had taken pictures of that, of Philosopher's Terrace, John, for the highway task force we were on. And you only get so far, and then you have residences, you know, from there to the corner. And then you do have a sidewalk. But anyway, I tried to stick it in, but...
Those residents all have off-street parking. Every one of them do.
They have driveways.
Yeah. But we do, don't we have easements on those properties, like a certain...
Probably five to seven feet.
Right, right, okay.
But it's still an engineering nightmare. You've got banks and you'll need, you know, they're all state-wise, but you'd need bulkheads or something. That's mine.
But no, it's a something I saw.
Yeah, yeah, that's not ideal.
Each one of these events seems to have sort of a side issue that comes up, you know. We learn a lot. I learned to not take packages from the UPS man at the visitor center and stick them inside the door because so much happened over there while I was telling people that it was closed. And I didn't want to put a sign up that says we're closed for a bomb scare. You know, that looks bad at a visitor center. So the UPS man came by and hands me these packages. I put them in the door and shut.